Good evening. This, the 10th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Alan Michael Carter from Shallow Christian Community Church. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
With bowed heads and humble hearts, let us go before the Lord in prayer. Oh, most merciful and most wonderful God, we come, God, not by happenstance or circumstance, God, but in your divine providence and your infinite wisdom, we gather here this evening. And God, before we move forward, God, we like to thank you for everything. God, we thank you for each and every moment that you have given us today. And God, we thank you for waking us up this morning. Now, God, we come tonight praying for our city. God, we pray, oh God, that you would breathe on our city. Oh, God, with the spiking homicide rate, God, we ask God for your protection and your safety. Oh, God, we pray, oh God, that in this meeting, God, we will be able to strategize, oh God, and we'll be able to, God, report, oh God, what's going on in this city. And we trust in you. God, we trust in you. God, we trust in you, that you have Baltimore on your mind, and God, and you have Baltimore on your plans. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. We say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Carter, for the invocation. Thank you.
The clerk will call the role of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello Stokes, Sneed Clark. Mr. President, Weaver Quam.
This evening, we welcome Ms. Nancy K. Smith from the Maryland Food Bank. Before she come, I want to recognize Delegate Robin Lewis, who have joined us. Please stand. Let's give her a hand. And thank you for your work as a freshman in Annapolis, helping to get the money that we brought back for Baltimore. Want to thank you and your colleagues and continue to, you know, go down there and fight for Baltimore. And if we can be of any service to you in the President's office, don't hesitate to call us. Thank you. I said this evening, we welcome Nancy K. Smith from the Maryland Food Bank. I said that earlier.
Thank you, President Young. My name is Nancy Smith. I am a resident of Baltimore City, been a resident since 1990. I'm also in the council medic district eight. Go Christopher Burnett, eight is great. And have the pleasure of working with him. Aside from that, I am also the community president of the Hunting Ridge Community Association. So, we are thrilled and pleased with our new councilman, and I want to give him a good shout out. Aside from that, I've been with the Food Bank for 13 years. We have served the city since 1979. The Maryland Food Bank started in a garage on Lindsay Avenue, moved over to Franklin Town, and then moved out to Healthorp. We have various programs in Baltimore City. The two that are near and dear to my heart is a school pantry, which is a makeshift pantry in a Baltimore City school. We have 127 school pantries. We also have what we call Food Works, and it is a training program. It's a 12-week training program for students. Upon graduation, we get them a job, and these jobs are good-paying jobs, $15 plus, and the students also get benefits for their families. So, I encourage, if any of the council members have a constituent that you feel is worthy, to please get in touch with me, and we can get them in the next class. My councilman, and, excuse me, Councilman Bullack came to the graduation, and it was quite, I think it was lovely, but so they saw it firsthand, the good works that we do. You know, the Maryland Food Bank, as I said, has served the city since 1979, but, and, you know, where hunger, you know, food insecure families is what we target. Last year alone, we distributed over 2 million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables. We work with many of the city agencies. I have talked to each and every one of the council members, except for a couple, about what we do in your district, who we serve in your district, who are the community leaders in your district that we work with. So, I want to take the opportunity to thank President Young's staff, to let me to come in and just say a few words about the Maryland Food Bank. The Maryland Food Bank, we distributed over 14 million pounds of food in Baltimore City last year. And of course, we see a spike every year, but, you know, 38% of the people that we serve in Baltimore City do not qualify for assistance, food assistance, 38%. They do not know, they cannot, I mean, family, churches can go so far, but 38% do not get assistance. So, you can see what we're up against. So, anyway, thank you again. Thank you, President Young, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. And thank you for all that the Food Bank, thank you for all the work that the Food Bank does to help get food to the most needy and vulnerable people in our city. It is the council customer generalizer invocation. I ask for motion generalizer prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of generalizing the invocations, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. But now, proceed with the adoption of the general.
Mr. President, the general proceedings from April 24, City Council meetings on the council member's desk.
The motion of the general, motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of adopting the general, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the general is adopted. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0065, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during fiscal 2018 year. Sponsored City Council's President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0066, annual property tax fiscal year 2018, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the Maryland City Council Baltimore for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, providing for estimated billing pursuant to state law and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. Sponsored City Council's President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0067, supplemental state fund operating appropriation, State's Attorney, $1,190,562, for the purpose of providing supplemental state fund operating appropriation in amount of $1,190,562 to State's Attorney Service 786, to provide funding for the development and implementation of strategies specifically intended to provide assistance to victims of crime in the city of Baltimore and providing for special effective date. Sponsored City Council's President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0068, waterfront management district, extension of district, for the purpose of extending the waterfront management district to encompass certain adjoining blocks, clarifying a description of certain properties accepted from the supplemental tax. Making this ordinance subject to certain contingencies, providing for special effective date, and generalating to the waterfront management district and authority. Sponsored by Cohen, Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an extension of the Waterfront Partnership. The Waterfront Partnership currently exists in around the harbor. This would encompass blocks in Fells Point. This was done at the request of merchants within the Fells Point area that felt they needed more cleaning services and safety services as well. We've been working in partnership with the Waterfront Partnership and several of our great Fells Point small businesses, as well as medium-sized businesses, to make this happen. Just to be clear, this will be paid for by the property owners and business owners of Fells Point, so it is not an additional burden on the taxpayers of Baltimore City. I want to thank my co-sponsor, who's been helping along in this process, Councilman Costello, as well as you, Mr. President, and all of my colleagues.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0069, city property renaming John Eager Howard Elementary School to Dorothy I. Height Elementary School, for the purpose of changing the name of John Eager Howard Elementary School, located at 2011 Linden Avenue, to Dorothy I. Height Elementary School. Sponsored, Pinkett, Cohen.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0070, zoning condition use parking open off-street area, 1120, 1122, 1124, and 1126 Clarkson Street, and 112, 114, 116, and 118 Seldner Place. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking open off-street area on the property known as 1120, 1122, 1124, and 1126 Clarkson Street, and 112, 114, 116, and 118 Seldner Place, as outlined in Redden and Company Platt. Sponsored, Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0071, zoning condition use conversion of two dwelling units to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 400 through 402 North Milton Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of two dwelling units to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 400 through 402 North Milton Street is outlined in Redden and Company Platt, and granting variances from certain lot area sizes, rear yard size, floor area ration, and off-street parking requirements. Sponsored, Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to introduce.
City Council Resolution 17-0023R, informational hearing, proposed replacement of the Baltimore and Potomac Tunnel, for the purpose of requesting that representatives from the Federal Railroad Administration, Amtrak, and the Maryland and City Departments of Transportation appear before the City Council to discuss the proposed BMP Tunnel Replacement Project and what its costs and benefits will be for both Baltimore as a whole and the neighborhoods that are being asked to host the project. Sponsored, Pinkett, Dorsey, Costello, Bullock, Henry, Middleton, Cohen, Burnett, Sneed, Schleifer, Riceinger.
Please note, Councilman Scott is co-sponsor, Councilman Stokes is co-sponsor, Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to the Federal Railroad Administration, the BMP Tunnel requires substantial maintenance and repair. It's been determined that this 140-year-old tunnel is functionally obsolete and is unable to meet the current and future rail demands. And so, over the past few years, the FRA has studied this issue, and just a few months ago, announced its preferred option. An option that would require Amtrak to acquire 12 acres of land, displace at least 17 residents and six businesses, and to situate a ventilation facility across the street from one of our 21st century schools, the John Eager Howard Elementary School. And so, while we agree that there were public hearings associated with this project, there's still concerns about the location of this ventilation facility, the number of freight trains that will utilize this tunnel, and the impact that it will have on the affected neighborhood. And so, I stand with the community, calling for this hearing so that we can get additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Please note, Council President Young is a co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution 17-0024R, upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and public green spaces, for the purpose of requesting the Director Department of Recreation and Parks, the Director Department of Transportation, the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Head of the Bureau of Solid Waste, and the Chief of the Budget, the Chief of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, to report on the annual cumulative total of calls for service for the upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and green spaces, and to recommend to the administration a single-city agency with the responsibility for mowing all city-owned lots, parcels, parks, and green spaces. Sponsored, Middleton, President Young, Henry, Costello, Clark, Sneed, Dorsey, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Pinkett, Cohen, Stokes, Schleifer, Riceinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman, I mean, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, here we go again. Every time around this time of year, usually April, we always seem to have a problem with getting not just privately-owned lots with abandoned homes, but city-owned lots as well. And it's not just the homes, it's all of the green space, the land that's around rec centers, schools. There just seems to be unorganization, and things aren't done in a timely manner. And this is a chance to, again, bring all of these agencies together and have a conversation and see if we can at least get one agency to handle the mowing, et cetera. You know, we are, we're trying to tackle our crime, we're trying to tackle problems with drug use sales, I mean, it, all these things contribute to the problems with unkept properties. And so, hopefully, we can finally come to some resolution, because I'm, you know, I know my colleagues feel the same. We spend a lot of time on trying to figure out who the owners of are of certain properties, and then to tackle the maintenance and grass cutting is just another issue, when we could be spending our time on, you know, a lot more other important issues. So, again, I thank you all for supporting me in this resolution.
Thank you, Council Vice President Middleton. Yeah, this is really a big problem, and we also need to find out who follows up after they cut the grass, to make sure it's done correctly, because I went out on Pulaski Highway, where the company just got the contract to do the median, and when I looked at the median, I was unhappy with it. So, I called Transportation, and they looking into it, because if we're going to spend millions of dollars for someone to come and supposed to cut the median, they have to do it correctly. And I mean, pick up the trash, because it's part of the contract, do the edging and do the curb part, none of that was done. So, thank you. Maybe we can get to the bottom of some of this stuff. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 17-0025R, request for state action, approve offshore wind farms in Maryland, for the purpose of urging the Maryland Public Service Commission to approve one or both proposals to build offshore wind projects in Maryland, creating a Maryland-based manufacturing hub for the wind industry that will bring significant economic benefits to the state and the city of Baltimore, while also displacing polluting sources of energy and helping Maryland achieve its greenhouse gases reduction goals. Sponsored, Middleton, President Young, Henry, Costello, Clark, Sneed, Dorsey, Burnett, Scott, Bullock, Pinkett, Cohen, Stokes, Riceinger.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another important request for state action. In a few weeks, the Maryland Public Service Commission is going to be, hopefully, approving two proposals, and in both of those proposals, they name a site in Spares Point, Baltimore County, for this offshore wind farms in Maryland. And we just would like to send a message to the Public Service Commission that we, as a council, those that have joined in on this sponsorship, we really think this is another important thing for Baltimore City. We are, you know, Spares Point has a lot of history, our city is, has history in manufacturing, and it would be wonderful for Spares Point to get this contract. It's important for Maryland, and more specifically Baltimore, to get on board with organizations such as the Clean Water Action and Chesapeake Climate Action Network, which, you know, are the leads in helping to keep us aware of these types of, you know, delivery of renewable wind energy projects. You know, this will help us all around. The health benefits, manufacturing careers, and resources are essential to the growth of our city, and we have components to do this, and the time is now. So, I, again, hope that the decision is made that we have Spares Point as the site for this. We've had several disappointments already with the red line and the purple line, and this would be a win-win for this city. Again, creating jobs are very important to us, and, again, thank you for your support.
You're going to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption?
Oh, yes, I am. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
I...
You move the resolution...
I move the resolution for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0025R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this resolution is adopted.
And I would just like, all right. I'd just like to thank everybody, too, for that, all my colleagues that attended the rally that we had outside, and I also want to say that the mayor is also very supportive of renewable energy and supportive of this resolution as well.
City Council Resolution 17-0026R, guns-for-bail program in Baltimore, for the purpose of expressing support for the creation of a guns-for-bail program in Baltimore, and requesting that law enforcement and other stakeholders appear before the City Council to discuss how the program could be created, what partnerships and procedures need to be put in place to make the program successful, and how to provide it with the necessary human and financial resources. Sponsored, Scott, Costello, Pinkett, Middleton, Riceinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this is a simple resolution. I think we all know that we have a gun problem in Baltimore, and what we want to see is this is a program that's already been touted and created. We want to see if it will work in Baltimore, if it's the right thing for Baltimore City. So, we look forward to the hearing. I thank for my co-sponsors, and I look forward to having a discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. You can find the consent counter in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter? Move by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this counter is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen. You move for floor privileges.
Aye. Mr. President, I...
You guys stand up.
Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest, Anthony Lloyd, as well as his mother.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to the guests of Councilman Cohen, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Mr. President, and colleagues on the City Council, when I met this young man about three years ago, he was rambunctious, energetic, and a natural leader. In school, I saw an incredible upward trajectory, and in my program, The Intersection, Anthony became an instant leader, advocate, and organizer. At Bard Early College High School, where he goes to school, he is Student Government Association President, and I'm proud to say that Anthony earned himself a full scholarship to Bard College in New York. That should be the end of this story. Unfortunately, it's not. Three weeks ago, Anthony was shot in the back. The bullet, and he showed me today, is less than an inch from his spine, and so, he was less than an inch from permanent paralysis, which would have ended his college career and would have been the end of Bard. The bullet is still stuck in there. The doctors have not been able to get it out, and yet, this man stands before you, and today was back in school, where he will complete his degree and then attend Bard next fall. The violence in our city feels all-consuming. It's at an unacceptable level, and folks should know that it's not just someone over there that's being impacted, it's people that we know and we love, that are doing everything we ask them to do, that are getting up and going to school and going to college and earning full scholarships. That this young man could be shot in the back says a lot about where our city is, and I think we all have a responsibility to fight for young people like Anthony, who are out there setting the pace for their colleagues, who are being leaders, who are advocating for things like the Children and Youth Investment Act, which our president championed. This is what Baltimore is all about. It is this kind of resilience, it is the ability to literally get shot and then get back up less than three weeks later, go back to school, and appear before you today. Councilman, would you mind grabbing that citation that's on my desk that I left over there? "I am honored to present..." Thank you so much. "I am honored to present this citation in support of Anthony Lloyd, in recognition of your perseverance in the face of adversity, and your acceptance and full scholarship to Bard College. Anything you want to say?
I just want to say that this situation hasn't stopped me, you know, it's definitely slowed me down for sure, without a doubt, but it hasn't stopped me from my dreams and everything that I want to do. I still impact youth in my school, and I still, you know, strive to finish, go to Bard for biology and get my masters in teaching and be a teacher, and then hopefully go back to school for nursing. So, I just want to say this hasn't stopped me, I'm still kicking, and I'm still going, and I'm still chasing my dreams.
Thank you, Councilman Zeke, for highlighting one of Baltimore's finest. We will now move to bills on the second reader. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0041, Downtown Management District and Downtown Management Authority, for the purpose of renewing and continuing the Downtown Management District and Downtown Management Authority, subject to certain conditions, for an additional five years, generally relating to the activities and authority of the Downtown Management District and Downtown Management Authority, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Dr. Bullock.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Council President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee heard this matter on April 27. The resolution extends the district for another five years. We heard the testimony about this important work that's happening downtown. There were no amendments, and I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0056, electronic control devices authorizing possession in most circumstances, for the purpose of allowing a person to possess and use an electronic control device as a form of non-lethal self-defense in the home and in public, prohibiting a person from possessing and using electronic control device in sensitive places, prohibiting a person who poses an unacceptable risk to public safety from possessing and using an electronic control device, prohibiting the sale of an electronic control device to persons who pose an unacceptable risk to public safety, establishing certain penalties, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to electronic control devices.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill on May 2, and then on May 4, the committee amended the bill. Those amendments are on my colleagues' desks. At this time, I'd like to move those amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Please note, Councilman Scott is a nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0016, zoning condition use conversion of one dwelling unit to one dwelling unit and one efficiency dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 2823 Huntington Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of one dwelling unit to one dwelling unit and one efficiency dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2823 Huntington Avenue is outlined in Redden and Company Platt.
Chair recognizes Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move to finding effects on this bill.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. All those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, the finding of the facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reissinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments that were on my colleagues' desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill is amended. Who said nay? Please note that Councilman Dorsey is a no. Chair recognizes Councilman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader. Are you a nay on?
No.
Okay. This bill moves the third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two three Sale of Property MAP seventy grid fourteen parcel nine eight eight in Baltimore County. For the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell due to public private sale, all its interests in certain property known as MAP seventy grid fourteen parcel nine eight eight in Baltimore County and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was put in at the request of the Department of Real Estate. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves the third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two four Sale of Property three oh one through three eleven North Warwick Avenue. For the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell due to public private sale, all its interests in certain properties known as three oh one through three eleven North Warwick Avenue and no longer need for public use and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to hold this bill until May fifteenth, city council meeting.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of holding this bill until the next council meeting, is that May?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. Say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. This bill will be on second reader at the May fifteenth council meeting.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five nine Sale of Property Block thirty-four thirty-four lots two and one. For the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell due to public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as block thirty-four thirty-four lots two and one and no longer need for public use and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was put in at the request of the Department of Housing and Community Development and I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approved, this bill moves the third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero 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 seven Zoning Conditional Use Parking Off-Street Garage one thousand South Elwood Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking off-street garage on the property known as one thousand South Elwood Avenue is outlined in red in the company plaque. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero one five Plan New Development Designation of the Fox Building for the purpose of approving the application of C and D Management LLP. Owner of the properties, owner of the following properties, thirty-one hundred Falls Cliff Road, thirty-three hundred Falls Cliff Road and Block thirty-five eleven D lots one and three, to have the property designated an industrial plan new development and approving the development plans admitted by the applicant. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two one Baltimore City zoning code legalization corrections for the purpose of legalizing new city code Article thirty-two as enacted by ordinance sixteen dash five eight one and edited, codified, and published by the Baltimore City Department Legislative Reference, further amending new Article thirty-two to correct various technical errors, omissions, and inconsistencies and to correct, clarify, and conform various references and language, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the zoning and development laws of the city of Baltimore. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two five City Property Renaming a Trail for the purpose of changing the name of the Ridge Trail located between the Norman Reeves Trail and the Old Spring Trail in Gwynne's Falls, Laken Park to be the Heidi Grunman Trail. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero three three Building Code Correcting Definition of High-Rise Building for the purpose of deleting from the city code, from the city building code, an outdated definition of high-rise building, thereby conforming that terms meaning to the more modern definition adopted by the International Building Code. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing for Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six three on Tuesday, June sixth at four P.M. for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. Thank you.
Any more committee announcements on this side? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to announce a hearing. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero 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 three R, which is Quarterly Budget Briefings, on Tuesday, May sixteenth at two P.M. in chambers. Budget and Appropriations at that time will also hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero 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 four R, which is budget oversight hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools at the same time on Tuesday, May sixteenth at two P.M. in chambers. Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, May sixteenth at three P.M., the Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill number seventeen dash zero zero six five. This is for the ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. This will be a budget overview with the Department of Finance and the Baltimore City Public School System. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, May seventeenth at five P.M. in chambers, the Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero six six. This will be televised live on Charm TV. This is also known as Taxpayers Night. Taxpayers Night provides residents of Baltimore City the opportunity to share comments and concerns about the city's budget. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by Dr. Bullock. All those in favor of suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold hearings on Bill seventeen dash zero zero six five on the following four days. Tuesday, May thirtieth, Wednesday, May thirty-first, Thursday, June first, and Friday, June second. Those hearings will start at nine A.M. And lastly, Mr. President, there is a memorandum and schedule on my colleague's desk. You will note a revised budget schedule from what was previously distributed to the council. It's come to the council's attention that this new schedule format that the council worked on with BBMR and the Budget Director was not communicated to our city agencies until last week. That is certainly disappointing considering that does not reflect the collaborative relationship that the council would like to have with our Budget Director. That said, I think it's important to note that this was not the intent of the council president or the council. So we have a revised schedule, which is more reflective of the committee's priorities moving forward. And I'd like to thank the council president's office and especially the mayor's office of government relations for working with the committee to get a schedule that more closely reflects the council's priorities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The executive departments will be having a hearing on Wednesday, May the tenth, at eleven o'clock for Community Relations Commission. I'm gonna just read the names. Adia Ari, Sarah Heaton, Crosona Whitehead, Dr. Sheridan Todd Yerry, Stephanie Smith, Stephen Ruckman, Dante Aqui, Sarita A. Hampton L., Dr. Philip H. Forfell, and Carrie L. Evans. For the Wade Commission, John Barber, Curry York, Mark McClure, Ally Emerson, Sherry Wood. For the civilian review board is Dr. Danielle Carter Kushner, Ms. Blair Thompson, Mr. Frederick Jackson, Dr. Melvin Curry, Dr. Bridal Pearson, Ms. Danielle Williamson, Ms. Leslie Parker Blyther. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Dr. Bullock.
Thank you, Council President. So this Thursday, May eleventh at two P.M. in council chambers, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero three five City Streets Closing of West Trenton Street.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reissinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero four nine on Wednesday, June the seventh at twelve P.M. in the council chambers. This is a plan new development. The designation is Overlook at Roland Park. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero two seven Wednesday, June the fourteenth at one P.M. in the council chambers. This is Bus Lanes and Stops, Prohibited Parking. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero three two on Wednesday, June the fourteenth at one thirty P.M. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning located at fifty-seven seventeen and fifty-seven twenty-three Harford Road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements, regular announcements. First of all, I want to ask Council Vice President Middleton to have a moment of silence for Captain James Smith. He was an educator. He also was a pioneer in the Department of Recs and Parks. He helped with the Camp Concern, Bainbridge Naval Academy, where he took scores and scores of young people. And we just knew him by Captain Smith. Then you know his name was James because all we knew was Captain Smith. And he taught us discipline, how to act. When we had different things in the rec centers, we better been on our best behavior or we could not participate. And his funeral was today. So I want a moment of silence for that. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that note, I rise to say that unfortunately, and ask Council Vice President Middleton to honor a moment of silence for the one hundred and eighteen homicide victims this year in the city of Baltimore as the beginning of this meeting. I don't think anything else needs to be said about that. Also, rise to say that we're gonna have two big events in the city tomorrow for city school student athletes. Unfortunately, they're gonna be happening at the same time. Tomorrow, for the first time, we're gonna be having a actual Baltimore City Public High School Softball Championship. It's at four P.M. at Coppin State University in Councilman Pinkett's district where Poly and City will do battle for the Baltimore City Championship. So we know this will be very lively. I can see the trash talk going back and forth between this young people on, online, on Facebook and on Twitter. And at the same time, at John Hopkins University in Councilwoman Clark's district, we will have the Baltimore City Baseball Championship where this year it will be Poly and City also. So we're gonna see a lot, lots and lots of rivalry tomorrow and hopefully, people can come out to support the young people. Thank you.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. In an ongoing effort to raise awareness about the arts and cultural activities that are going on in Baltimore City, before our next council meeting, there are just a couple of things I thought it was worth mentioning. This Thursday, May eleventh, from five to ten P.M., the annual MICA Art Walk will take place along Mount Royal Avenue. This is the largest display of artworks in Baltimore every year with three thousand works being shown from over four hundred artists from across the country. And then this coming Saturday, the Charm City Craft Mafia will hold their annual pile of craft at Saint John's Church at twenty-six forty Saint Paul from, I believe, ten to five P.M. And these are great events that I hope all will take note of and attend. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
We'd like a moment of silence. The next council meeting will be held on Monday, May fifteenth. And we would also like a moment of silence for Captain James Smith and the families of the one hundred and eighteen homicide victims in the city of Baltimore.